Happy Veterans Day, which is tomorrow, and happy Marine Birthday, which is today. Are there any veterans in the crowd today? Please stand up so we can thank you. Okay, Springfield Conservatory of the Arts is in the house. Maia Lopez, Deanna Mondan, and John Arlie Cologne. If I pronounced it wrong, please call. And Nathan LaRose is here, and they're accompanied by Rachel Santore, who is the Assistant Principal, and Erica Karen, who is the Music Teacher. Come on down. And if I pronounced your name wrong, please correct me. Your Raiders are playing good football now.
Good evening. Here's who speaks from Conservatory of the Arts.
Could you speak to us a bit louder? That's for TV, so we can hear you.
Got it.
Thank you.
So, good evening. Me and my friends are from the Conservatory of the Arts, and we have been doing so many cool stuff.
What is your name?
Nathan LaRose.
Okay, Nathan.
And we've been doing so many cool things in school, and instead of telling you about it, we would like to demonstrate.
Great. If that was Morse code, it passes. Yes, ladies, young ladies. Please say your names loud and proud.
Mariah Akers.
Mariah Akers.
Mariah.
Deanna Mondan.
Harmony Wilson.
Kania Simmons.
Okay. You're doing fine. Thank you. That was great. We never know, we might want an encore. Nice job, Conservatory of the Arts, Springfield Conservatory of the Arts. Appreciate that. Thanks. Okay, Springfield Renaissance School is in the house. We have Jose Garcia, Janaya Brown, Aizen A... Correct me, Weldon. Correct me, though, and we're accompanied by Daniel Pear, the Assistant Principal. Come on down. Renaissance in the house? Could you correct? I wanted to make sure I got that last first name correct.
It's Azenasia.
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 Azenasia with the beautiful curly hair. Okay, we got it. Okay.
Hello, my name is John A. Brown. This is Jose Garcia and Azenasia Weldon, and we are students from the Springfield Renaissance School. We came here to talk to you about our roller coaster expedition. For our roller coaster expedition, we have four long-term learning targets. Those learning targets are: I can justify my design decisions with explanation of the engineered design process; two, I can explain how different types of energy are transferred and transformed; three, I can investigate how motion and force relate to real-world situations; and four, I can synthesize my knowledge for MCAS and use scientific equations appropriately.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Were you done? I'm sorry.
Oh, no. Jose will be talking about our kickoff to the roller coaster expedition. I mean, Azenasia, sorry.
Two weeks ago, we had our kickoff expedition of what we learned about roller coasters, like the physics, engineering, and mathematical concept. We had four activities that exemplified the process of engineering. The first activity we did was the information about roller coasters and the different designs of them. The second one was the catapult, where we designed our own, like, how, yeah, like how we designed our own roller coaster. The next, the next, um, the next roller coaster... Ah, sorry. The next activity was about the force of an object's motion. And the last activity was about, like, the... We're basically measuring, measuring the speed, like the distance of speed for the roller coasters. And now Jose will be talking about the Berkshire East Fieldwork.
Aisha. Mr. Garcia?
All right, hello, my name is Jose Garcia. Basically, what we did at Berkshire East for our fieldwork is we talked about the force, friction, and energy of, about roller coasters. Also, we just learned about how everything is supplied by energy, because Berkshire East was only run by solar power and wind turbines. Also, we talked about, with an engineer there from Berkshire East, about the engineered design process for everything and everything what it took to build the roller coaster at Berkshire East. And also, we got to ride a ski lift there and to get to see the solar panels, and we got to see the wind turbines. So, yeah.
Two weeks from now, we'll be making our own roller coasters, handcrafted, and we will be making our own patents for the roller coaster, too. So, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is that our new student representative standing back there? Kenneth, come on up, from SciTech. Kenneth, how do you pronounce your last name properly?
Hassan.
Hassan. Kenneth Hassan from SciTech, our new student representative from SciTech High School. High School of SciTech. And he's looking very GQ, too.
Yeah.
I like that. Well, Zenetti Middle School is in the house, and I know there's a young lady here, Claire Murphy, who I think, school committee member, Attorney Peter Murphy knows very well. She's a very good singer, too. And Frances Valarama is also here, so come on down. And joined by Karen Christian Clark, Zenetti Principal, and Ms. Kelly Shay, ELA teacher.
Hello, I am Frances Valarama. I'm an eighth-grade student at Zenetti Montessori School. I have been at Zenetti since I was three years old. Today, I'm here to tell you about the great support system we have at our middle school. My teachers are always there to help any student who needs help. I personally take pride in my ability to take responsibility for my learning, but not everyone is like that. In those cases, our teachers do different things to make sure every kind of learner succeeds at our school. They provide many opportunities and choices for us and support our learning. For each class and every subject, we get a due note that we must complete to refresh our minds on a certain topic and to get our brains ready for the lesson. They taught us how to effectively take notes on new things we need to remember from the lesson and new vocabulary we will come across. We are supported during the lesson because the teachers, no matter what subject we are in, explain the topic in interesting ways. Then they actually show us, step by step, how to do whatever it is we need to do to successfully complete the work independently. They even, they even make charts, so we have them up in the room if we need to refer back to them. Next, we have independent work or group work. For independent work, we answer questions and problems that are based on the topic that was taught that day. For group work, we get a certain assignment or a series of questions that we need to answer together. Whether we are doing independent work or group work, our teachers walk around and check in with us to make sure our learning is on the right track, which helps us make sure we are going in the correct direction. At the end of class, we come together for a closing question, which is usually a question that sums up the lesson for the day. This way, our teacher gets an overall view of what we understood about the lesson. Our teachers set up tutoring sessions before, during, and after school. We have working lunch, so we can fix the mistakes we have made on our work, or so we can also make up work. Our teachers also give us extra credit work to help us improve our grades, and they help us when we don't understand what we are learning. The way our teachers have taught us helped us to get prepared for park testing. Our school's average score for math was 760, and our score for ELA was 768. I got advanced for both of my park scores, and personally, something that helped me was my teachers and being able to go over my notes in independent work. We have whole-group lessons and even lessons that are student-guided, and I think this helps us understand what we are learning even more. We feel in control of what we are doing and can go at a pace that is just right for us. Another thing that is helpful is just being able to ask questions and answer the questions teachers ask when we don't understand something. When the teachers ask us a certain question, it challenges our brains to think deeper about what we are learning, and I think challenging the brain of a student is always good for them. We do fun activities before DBA tests and unit assessments. We get study guides and play a fun game similar to Jeopardy. This makes me want to do better, because sometimes a contest is healthy when it comes to your learning, and everybody likes to win. At the end of the activity, the group that has the most points gets three to five extra credit points on their next test. As an eighth grader, I feel grateful for all the things my teachers have done to help me improve my test scores and grades. We get a lot of homework and a lot of classwork, but at the end of the day, I know it is to help me understand my work and get better grades. Making all those posters, taking notes, working as a group, and asking questions are always helpful to me because they make me want to learn and want to do better at Zenetti.
Aisha.
Hello, I'm Claire Murphy, an eighth-grade student at Zenetti Montessori School. I've been here since I was three for 11 years. There are many extracurricular activities that take place at Zenetti Montessori. Activities like our robotics club that take place after school on Wednesdays and Thursdays, our JV and Vent team, an invention team that takes place once a week after school, our marathon club that takes place on Tuesdays and Friday mornings, and many, many more. You can do more than one. We also have our enrichments that take place for 20 minutes at the end of each day. I myself am involved in Marathon Club, Inventions Team, School Sports Chorus, and I hope to be a part of our new program with Girls Inc. So you may be wondering what we do in these programs. Marathon Club is two days a week before school. We come to school at 7:30, and we run two miles. Before, we, we run from Zenetti to Van Horn Park. Then we run in the park and back to Zenetti, all before school begins. In the JV and Vent team, we have a book we follow and try to create the given invention, inventions like circuits. We get all the supplies we need to complete the invention and JV and ventures. The robotics team builds robots and, robots and helps to compete this year against other schools. Chorus is another amazing opportunity, and I love being in it. It has, it takes place during the school day and during a given time, but the students have to maintain their grades at a B or above. We get to perform for so many different events. We perform for the inauguration for the president of Springfield College, open for a three-time Grammy winner, and famous musicians named Seth and Nirva, who only sing songs with positive messages. Middle school enrichments take place from 3:00 to 3:20 to end our day. During this time, we used to have organized recess, but the students did not like this because one class was assigned to something each day, and of course, not every kid liked the same thing. So our teachers work together to try to do something that all middle school students enjoyed. Students are divided up by interest. The enrichments include chorus and dance team, knitting, gym, technology, math games, ballroom dance, and yearbook, which is the one I am involved in. There is also study hall that you can choose to go to for the day to catch up on your work. At Zenetti, these activities are reward, are a reward. You have to keep up your grades and your behavior, or you have to take a break for a while until you are at a good spot again. Then you get another chance. Middle school students are so grateful we get to attend Zenetti Montessori Middle School and that we have the amazing opportunities that are provided for us.
Thank you, Claire. Good job, guys. Thank you, Frances. Very good. Well, STEM Middle Academy is in the house. Matter of fact, my young nephew, Chris Duffer Cummings there, and he loves it. He loves it. Tasha Lees Ramos, who's an eighth grader, and John Barlow, who's a seventh grader, and they're accompanied by their wonderful principal, Kevin Laleen, Principal of STEM Middle Academy.
I don't want to steal the spotlight by any means, but I want it to begin, because they deserve a proper introduction. But first, I want, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Superintendent, all the school committee members, for all of your support in our ability to rise from Level 3 to Level 1. It's the role that each of you play in your individual communities that provide the resources that allow us to have the success that we have. And I'm both excited and honored to be a part of it, because this is only the tip of the iceberg in the Springfield community, and I couldn't be happier to be a part of it. I want to introduce both Tasha Lees Ramos and John Barlow, because they are representative of all the hard work and the successes. They both, as individuals, had over 10-point gains on both their ELA and math park, and that is quite the reason why... And that truly is the reason why STEM Middle Academy was able to achieve the goal that we did. So I'm gonna back up now, and I'm gonna let the students do the talking. But I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin. Miss Ramos? See, he said ladies first. Way to go, Mr. Barlow.
Well, first, I'd like to say hello.
Hello.
I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Tasha Lees Ramos. I'm 15 years old. I am an eighth grader who attends STEM Middle Academy. And I would like to start by stating my topic. My topic is building relationships to support and enhance learning. First, we can talk about our teachers that helped me throughout the years. I've been through sixth, seventh, and eighth. I've changed a lot. So teachers, first, we can start off with social studies teachers. Social studies, we have a teacher named Mr. Shaughnessy. I've had him for sixth grade, not for seventh, but again, I've met him for eighth, so it's a familiar face. Our teachers have a connection with us, like... They talk about how they hold me to a very high expectation. They always tell me to try my best and not giving up. They always expect more from me, because they know I can do it. They've never told me that I could never done it. If I needed extra help, they would help me. They would say never to be afraid, to ask for help, because help is important when you need it the most. High expectations, of course, like I said, they hold us to high expectations. They, they ask for more from us when we need it the most. Positive reinforcement for testing environments. Our positive reinforcements were that depending on how the student reacted with our students in the classroom and our teachers, they would find a way how to put us in an environment that's most positive and most possible for us to test, test in, and do, and come out with a good overcome. Our, my social responsibilities, well, I had to start as not getting caught to drama, because we know, middle school, we all struggle with that. Making smart personal choices, like the friends you hang out with, because you know, there's not always the best group of friends you can hang out with. And not getting distracted in class, because you know, there's always at least that one class clown who has to be making fun of other people just to catch attention for themselves. And, well, I like to reflect on my personal experience at STEM and how STEM has supported me. I am, I have done sports for sixth through seventh. I've been on the volleyball team, the basketball team, and the soccer team.
Very good.
So it really helps me that, to know that I have things that keep me busy, so that I don't end up, as most teenagers are, always on their phones, on social media, out in the streets, partying. And there's always the addictions that most teens have to go through. There's alcohol, there's drugs, there's peer pressure. There's many things we have to go through in life. And I would have to say a teenager doesn't have it easy in how we are now and what world we live in. And I would like to say that everything matters, and we're all in this together. And of course, I would like to pass to fellow student John Barlow with what he has to say.
Nice job, Ms. Ramos. Okay, you're up, Mr. Barlow.
Good evening. My name is John Barlow. I'm 12 years old. I'm in seventh grade. At STEM Middle Academy, you need a mental toughness and self-motivation to do great in school, and of course, at STEM. It's definitely a self-motivated journey. You need confidence in yourself and confidence that people will assist you, because the staff definitely provides a safe, professional learning environment for all students there. And as my principal has talked about so many times, and it has, it has affected many students through the years, I'm hoping, that we're all in this together. We are STEM. And he does this for a good reason. It helps us to realize that it's not just you against STEM. It's STEM and you against the rest. And it's, you're, you're, they, they make you feel like you're all on the same team. It's not a battle between, you know, getting homework done. It's, it's a battle between, am I gonna get this homework done? And, um, am I going to get into a good college? A good high school? And the process in STEM is definitely a group effort. And we're all supported by staff. And speeches provided by Mr. Laleem and Ms. Stanton help motivate us and push us forward to excellence. Mr. Laleem definitely reminds us that this is the big leagues and always wants us to do best in school and in turn, have a successful life. And not only that, um, he nails into our heads, but for a good reason. The STEM pledge, and we'd like to recite that for you. "We are crew, not passengers. I am the leader of my own learning. I act responsibly and take charge of my own success. I collaborate, because I know we achieve more when we work together. I show integrity and do the right thing, even when no one is looking. I innovate and use new ideas to solve problems and improve our world. I strive for quality and work towards excellence. I support literacy and global citizenship for all. Science, technology, engineering, mathematics, we are STEM."
Great job, Ms. Ramos, Mr. Barlow. Nice job. Nice job, Principal Laleen. Great representatives. Okay, last but not least, South End Middle Schools in the house. Grade eight, Damian Gonzalez is here. And Janine Yassen and Lisa Zabliski, our teachers, are accompanying Damian. Come on down, Damian.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and school committee members. My name is Damian Gonzalez, and I am an eighth grader at South End Middle School. I have been a student there for three years. During my three years, I have been, I have gained a lot of knowledge that will help me accomplish my goals. My goals are to gain an education, learn about the opportunities at each high school, and to make as many friends as I can. Even though I may struggle to accomplish my goals, I know I will be successful. So far this year, my classmates and I have many experiences. One, visiting Westfield State University. We took a tour of the campus to learn about housing, college classes, and how the campus looked. We even got to eat in the dining hall. Another experience is all the high school visits. We have met the principals, some teachers, and students, as well as heard what the high schools have to offer. Finally, one of our eighth-grade classes has been adopted by the DA's office. We are one of the two schools with the opportunity in Hampton County. The seventh graders in our building have visited Cabo Mountain to learn about water supply and the filling system. They will be attending Echos in a few weeks as well. The sixth graders have had a chance to visit the mayor's office and learn a little about Springfield beyond the South End neighborhood. At the school, students and community members work together to beautify the neighborhood by planting mums around Main Street. Students, staff, and administrations are working hard to earn good grades and to pass forward to the next level. We are training, you know, we are trying to keep the title of Level 2. We know that it will be hard work, but we are up for the challenge. Thank you for your time and the chance to tell you about South End Middle School.
Nice job, Damian. That concludes our middle school speak-out to all representatives, family, and to the staff. Very, very nice job. We'll take a one-minute recess, in case anybody wants to leave. Way to go, Damian. Good job, kid. One-minute recess. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Sarno? Yes, present. Ms. Karen Murphy?
Present.
Brett?
Present.
Ms. Gresham?
Present.
Ms. Gresham, unfortunately, is unable to attend tonight's meeting. She sent notice.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Present. And we're also joined by our student representative from the high school of Science Technology. Kenneth, pronounce your last name again. I want to...
Hassan.
Hassan. We appreciate you having here. If we could all please rise for a moment of silence and then pledge allegiance to all our veterans. Happy Veterans Day, and to all the Marines, happy birthday today also. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. We'll now move to the approval of minutes of October 4th, 2016, special school committee meeting. The October 6th, 2016, regular school committee meeting. The October 20th, 2016, school committee working session meeting. Any questions or comments?
I move, maybe, accepted.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, or a second? Second by Mr. Rolland. All those in favor, say aye. All those bow's? Aye. Ayes have it. We'll now move to Section 3. These are items requiring the vote of the school committee. A is to approve Putnam Vocational Technical Academy students' travel to Marlboro, Mass., November 20th through the 22nd, 2016, for Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference, which they always, I know they do very, very well. I thought I saw Hillary here. Superintendent Dan Warwick, please.
Yeah, Skills USA, our students have done great in these competitions. Hillary's here, if you have any questions, but we've approved these and this experience.
Les, you're welcome.
So I'm recommending approval of this field trip. There's an informational piece in your packet.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor, Vice Chair Collins, or a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Roll call, votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sarno? Yes. Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Brett?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Pass. Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more sufficient votes, matter. Good luck out there, Hillary. B is to approve Putnam Vocational Technical Academy students' travel to Marlboro, Mass., April 27th through the 29th, 2017, for Skills USA competition. Superintendent Warwick?
Almost everything I said before. I'm recommending approval. There's an informational piece in your packet. This has been great for our kids, so I recommend approval.
Ditto. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rolland, or a second?
Second.
Second by Attorney Murphy. Roll call, votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sarno? Yes. Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Brett?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more sufficient votes, matter. Pass. C is to approve Putnam Vocational Technical Academy students' travel to Louisville, Kentucky, the home of the Kentucky Derby, June 19th through the 24th, 2017, for the Skills USA National Competition. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Can recommend approval.
Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hurst. Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. D is to approve Putnam Vocational Technical Academy students' travel to North Oxford, Massachusetts, January 20th and through the 21st, 2017, for the Winter Leadership Conference to Learn Leadership in Team-Building Schools. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, I'm recommending approval. There's an informational piece in your package.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor. Motion by Ms. Perez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rolland. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. Thank you. This is the Putnam Vocational Technical Academy show tonight. And speaking of that, we're here to approve students' travel to Sturbridge, Mass. from March 14th through the 17th, 2017, for the Leadership Conference to compete at state level, host competitions, and engage in workshops. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Can recommending approval, Mayor. There's an informational piece in the package. This has been a great experience for our kids.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor.
I make motion.
Motion by Mr. Rolland. Is there a second?
So, second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. F is to approve a City of Springfield High School diploma for Deanna Daniels. Superintendent Warwick?
Yes, the student finished In-N-Out district placement and completed all the requirements for a diploma. I recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Warwick. Superintendent Warwick, any questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hurst. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. Congratulations, Ms. Daniels. G is to approve City of Springfield diploma for Brian Donaz.
Brian completed all our requirements and recommending approval for a diploma for Brian.
Thank you, Superintendent.
In-N-Out district placement private school.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Perez. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Rolland. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. Congratulations, Brian. H is to approve a City of Springfield High School diploma for Kirk Floyd. Superintendent Warwick?
Again, Kirk completed all of our requirements and passed the MCAS. I'm recommending approval for the diploma. In-N-Out district setting.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Perez. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Ms. Hurst. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. Congratulations to four. I is to approve the revised Springfield Public Schools tobacco use by students, alcohol use by students, drug abuse by students policy. First vote. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, this item is going to require two votes. We're going to have the first reading tonight. These are really minor changes to the policy. I have Jean Clancy and Martha here, and I think Michelle Heim is in the audience too, if anyone has any questions. But it came through subcommittee the other night. Again, we had to come into compliance with some new DESI regulations, made minor modifications to the policy to include vapor e-cigarettes and a little improvement in the language of the policy. It came through subcommittee. Rose, I don't know if you'd want to speak to it.
Ms. Perez, if you want to comment on that.
Yes, we, thank you, Mayor. We met on Tuesday. We went over all the different changes. Mostly it's wording changes, not changes on the policy. So we recommend that the school committee approve the revised policy.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Any questions or comments, Ms. Perez or Superintendent Warwick?
I recommend approval also.
Okay, hearing none. Again, any questions? Is there a motion on the floor?
I make motion.
Motion by Mr. Rolland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. Thank you for your work on this, Ms. Perez. J is to approve a Springfield Public Schools teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs policy. And this is the first vote. Superintendent Warwick?
Yes.
Yes, and this will also require two votes. Yeah, just recommending approval. Again, these are just changes to policy. We're not changing any curricular pieces here. We already had this in our health curriculum. So it's just bringing our policy into compliance with DESI regulations. Rose, I don't know if you want to speak more to it.
Yes, we went over the changes. This is something that was needed. Last time we looked at this was in 1993, so it was about time we looked at it.
He did an update.
So we recommend that the school committee approve the revised policy.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor. Motion by Attorney Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rolland. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Again, thank you for your work on this, Ms. Perez. We now move to approve the revised Springfield Public Schools Wellness Policy. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Again, this was caused by regulatory requirements with DESI, so we had to update our policy. We met in subcommittee to update the policy. Very few significant changes here, so this is only going to require one vote of the school committee. The changes are all highlighted and tracking, but we're recommending approval. It came through the subcommittee.
Same thing. Rose wanted to speak to it.
Thank you. We went over the changes, and we recommend that the school committee approve the revised policy.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor. Say again. There's a motion by Vice Chair Collins. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Rolland. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. Hey, Kenneth, anytime you want to chime in, go ahead, okay? Mr. GQ down there. Okay. L is to approve the supplemental budget decrease in charter school tuition. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As all of you, I'm sure, have heard, we had to cut our budget very late in the year. We had a $10 million cut in our budget upfront. When you look at a level service budget, we had an additional cut that occurred during the summer, 3.2 million, because we only got 56% of the charter school reimbursement we were supposed to get from the state. So we had to cut 3.2 million out of the budget after making major cuts already. You can see the areas we made adjustments in, which is going to take our reserve pieces down. Pat Roach is here, if anyone has any specific questions on it, but it brought our budget into balance and came through finance. I don't know if Mr. Collins wanted to speak to it.
No, it went through the finance committee. All of the suggestions that Mr. Roach made made perfect sense. It's a shame that we would have to cut 3.2 million this late in the year due to the state not funding as they promised, but it was accomplished and our budget is in balance. So we came with a full recommendation of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
The charter school reimbursement is part of the law, but it's subject to appropriation. And the legislature hasn't appropriated the money the last several years to even give us the reimbursement they give us. So this cut was on top of a $36 million hit we already took out of our budget for charter school tuition.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. And again, that's why that question 2 is so important, voting it down. And as a matter of fact, Governor Baker actually commended our Springfield system here on the innovative programs that we're doing with the empowerment zone and held it up as an example that other districts should follow with the innovation and working together partnership on it. So with that, if there's no other questions or comments, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Rolland. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. Thank you very much. M is to approve the National Science Foundation UMass grant in the amount of $28,845. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's an informational piece in your package on this. This is for us to use, integrate computer science into the science curriculum. And across all our curriculums, Paul Foster is going to lead teams of teachers in this work and recommend we approve to accept the grant.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins. Is there a second? Second by Attorney Murphy. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes matter. Passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move to informational discussion items, and we're going to recognize DeBery School for exiting Level 4 accountability status. Very proud of that. Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, just three short years, DeBery School has made dramatic academic achievement gains, gains in climate and culture. Just incredible. One of the hardest things to do in the accountability system in Massachusetts is to exit Level 4 status as a school. And to do it in only three years is rather incredible. DeBery is the seventh school in Springfield to exit Level 4 status. We're really proud of that as well. But I want to give all the accolades to Principal Stefania Richella and her outstanding staff for just incredible work and to make those kind of gains in only three years. It's just a tremendous job, so.
Come on up, everybody. Come on up. Come on up.
Thank you, but I do have a few words to say just to discuss, you know, what we did over the past three years to get out. From the time that I had walked into DeBery in July 2013, there's been a shared vision of improving student achievement. It began with having an entire staff, having an underlying belief that all children can succeed and improve, and that is the school's responsibility to ensure that this happens. There have been many factors that have contributed to the overall success of DeBery Elementary School. Improving the culture and climate, having effective teachers in front of students every day, having high expectations for all, and strengthening the school, family, and community partnership are just a few. The culture and climate, when you walk into the building, has been transformed for students, parents, and staff. Structures and protocols were immediately put into place to reorganize the expectations for behaviors and academics. Over time, the students understood that certain behaviors were not going to be tolerated and that they would have logical consequences. A teacher of deportment position was created, and the teacher of deportment led a PBIS team, along with many other teachers, to implement a model consistently throughout the school. The team analyzed lots of data and created a tier behavior intervention model for all students. The data is input on a daily basis, analyzed, and presented to staff and its parents, and that occurs regularly. Solutions are discussed and then monitored and revisited. The amount of office referrals from 2013 to 2016 has decreased by 62%, and the suspension rate also decreased from 20% to 7%, which, when students are in the classroom, it increases time on learning. The collegiality between the staff is second to none. Each year in the fall, there is an organizational health inventory that is given to all staff members. The overall score has increased from a 9 to a 72, which indicates that staff is willing and able to function at an interdependent level. There's a positive and supportive work environment that facilitates open and honest two-way communication, and the students and staff know that they're valued and that they're expected to work in a team. There are many systems in place to help teams progress through the different levels. They now plan proactively, identify discrepancies, predict future trends, hold themselves and others accountable, and work collaboratively. The DeBery staff has always worked hard, but they are now working smarter on the right things. Over the past three years, the leadership model in the building has changed. In the beginning, it was mostly led by me, as well as the ILSs', but over time, it is a shared responsibility, and it's shared among many, many staff members. ILSs', effective educator coaches, department chairs, test coordinators, teachers, the PBIS team, as well as me. The staff strengths have been tapped into, and the shared leadership has been focused on meeting the school's goals. These opportunities have helped staff members grow. As we all know, having an effective teacher in front of the students every day is one of the most important factors. Outstanding educators know that if a school has great teachers, it's a great school. Some ways, we have increased student achievement at DeBery by improving the effectiveness of the current teachers, placing teachers in positions that best suit their strengths, and by recruiting and retaining skilled teachers. and by recruiting and retaining skilled teachers. We provide teachers with resources and supports they need to maximize their impact. We've also fostered high expectations for academics, behavior, and attendance. The attendance rate for students has increased from 93.2 percent to 95 percent. Teachers are held to the highest standards. The expectations have been explained, model, and staff received feedback. They then act on the feedback and improve the teaching and learning in their classrooms. Students understand their own data and set improvement goals. Teachers are required to collect and analyze data from numerous assessments. From there, we place students in the correct intervention. The data is looked at regularly, and students move in and out fluidly. From 2013 to 2016, students have increased their proficiency rate in ELA, math, and science. In ELA, their CPI has risen from a 57.9 to a 77.4. In math, it has risen from a 57.8 to an 82.9, and in sciences, it has risen from a 53.8 to a 62.5. An even more notable increase is in the limited English population. We often talk about closing the achievement gap, and the students at DeBarry have done it in three years. The LEP students have risen from a 45.2 to a 76.5 in ELA, and from a 47.6 in math to an 83.8, outperforming the general population. Over the past three years, all teachers have focused on improving their core instruction and developed a deeper understanding of the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. This work has allowed them to develop, teach, and assess rigorous, standards-based lessons. They've also worked on strengthening existing relationships with families in the community. Over the past three years, they've continued to work with the local colleges and universities such as Springfield College, AIC, and Westfield. Students visit the campuses, participate in a partners program, and work with the AmeriCorps students. Another way that this has benefited DeBarry, and I'm sure the rest of the school system, is that we've hired many of our student teachers that have done their student teaching at DeBarry. So when they're actually a first-year teacher, it's more like their second year because they've already worked with us for a year. We've also been one of the leaders in the Home Visit Project. Over the past three years, we've visited over 200 families. The staff has been welcomed into their homes, and they're able to build relationships with the families. We hold conferences in November with all of the students' families, and that's when we distribute their report cards and explain the academic attendance and behavioral expectations. All the success that DeBarry students have achieved could not have been possible without my dedicated, hard-working staff. They all believed in the mission and vision and knew the students could achieve academic excellence, demonstrate respectful and responsible behavior, and develop a passion for learning. They never gave up. Finally, I want to thank the district for giving DeBarry the autonomy it needed to get the work done. The school committee, Superintendent Warwick, Assistant Superintendent Martinez, and my CSO, Kim Wells, and other district staff. They would have all been very supportive every step of the way and trusted me and the team to get the work done.
Before we issue the citation, any questions or comments at all?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Kenneth.
I kind of wanted to ask you if there's a little specific formula that you think has really made that kind of impact on the students. From what I'm understanding, there's been a big jump in increase of productivity, I'm sorry. So do you think that there's a specific formula that you have and you made for your school that should be implemented in all these other schools? How the students better grab, better go and grab what you do here. Can I bring that to the middle school and so on?
We're gonna make him a voting member. Good job, Ken.
I don't think that there's a specific formula that works for every school that you could say this is what you need to do, because every school has a different dynamic and is a little different. But as far as setting high expectations and modeling, this is what it needs to look like, and this is what needs to happen for you to move on and to increase and to be proficient and providing incentives that kids are attracted to. And once they see success, and it works actually for staff too, once you feel it, you like it, and you want more of it. And it works for the students that way, too. So the students are happy coming to school, they follow the rules, the routines and procedures, and they're making a lot of progress. So as far as there being a specific one, I don't think that there is.
I have to say too to Stephanie, and how are the kids doing, by the way?
They're good. They turned two.
Okay. To Stephanie and her traveling crew over there, you did an outstanding job at another school not too long ago, and now you've come to DeBarry, which had some challenges. And, you know, many times people will say that's difficult to teach in an urban setting, at times, but it's not impossible. And our teachers and administration and principals are proving that out. And some of these scores that the superintendent had informed us on, the huge jump you made, that's the partnership with your leadership and all your teachers and with the family and making the kids believe not only that they can learn, but have fun learning, too. So quite a testament, and we congratulate you. I don't know if there's any other questions from a former principal, retired principal, vice chair.
Sure. You know, being a teacher can be the most rewarding of professions at times, and at other times, it can be the most daunting of professions. And there is no time more daunting than when you have to become introspective and say to yourself, what I'm doing isn't working. Common reactions are to give up, or let's put the blame on somebody else. But that's not what your people did, that's not what you did. You stiffened your shoulders, you stiffened your spine, and you said, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna go forward, I'm gonna look at what I did wrong, I'm gonna correct it. The results are here to show that when people get together and do and learn from each other, adults as well as students, these are the kinds of results we can get. Congratulations to all of you.
Superintendent Warwick. I think these outstanding results, if you have, you couple it with the fact that the entire state has been flat relative to gains, and we changed the test to a more rigorous test, to a PARK test, and still got these dramatic gains. It really is an incredible accomplishment. But I think if there is a formula, it's outstanding leadership and outstanding teachers doing a great job, and I think that's what happened here. And congratulations to you, and thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Al.
Principal Stefania invited me last year for Spanish Heritage Month, and you could feel the change in the school. You walked into school, and the kids were happy, they were excited, and I got to speak to the kids, and I saw the teachers, how they were reacting with the kids and how they interact with them. You get to see a different school than schools that don't get involved. You felt the engagement with the teachers and the principal and everybody. So hats off. You see, you've done some good work there, and you can continue doing some good work. I know you loved that school, but good job.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. We have citation. Springfield Public Schools, Springfield School Committee recognizes William and DeBarry Elementary School leaders, teachers, staff, and students. Through their hard work and dedication, DeBarry has exited Level Four Accountability Status and has become a Level Three Performing School and climbing. Signed by myself, Mayor Don Nick Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and all school committee members. Stefania and team, congratulations.
If you Stefania and all the teachers could come through and shake everyone's hands. Please, come on up.
We'd like to shake your hand.
And if you could come through and...
Maybe it might rub off on us, you know?
Come on, folks, you were in the trenches doing the work.
Good job.
Stefania, congratulations.
Thank you.
You look great, too.
Take your award. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great work. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Very proud, great job. Thanks so much. Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much. Congratulations. Great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's the Hobbit's plan. Good to see you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. How lucky are you, huh? Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a good point.
You're a harrow over here, yeah? All right, DeBarry. Okay. We now will move to SEDEXO presentation, and Mark Jeffries and crew is here. Henry, Henry's here. Did you bring anything to eat, or what?
I know. That's right.
No, 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 we're just kidding you, Henry. We're just kidding you. SEDEXO's been a great partner, great corporate citizen, Superintendent Warwick.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you said it all there. SEDEXO has done absolutely... You're gonna see some slides here, but they've just done an incredible job on our breakfast and lunch program. They've been a great partner. Not only have they done an outstanding job, you're gonna see the participation rates way up, the breakfast in the classroom model, that they've done a tremendous amount of logistical work to make happen as a leader for the state, and we've been recognized for that. And besides all of that, they're just great corporate citizens. They care about this city, they're there at every event or every time we need them, they're there for us. So I just want to tip my hat to Mark. Again, we have a great team here. Thank everyone. My good friend Henry Figurito, that's part of the team. But they've done an absolutely fabulous job, and I can't say enough about them, and thank you.
I just wanted to say one more thing before, unless there's any comments, with school committee members, Mark takes over. Superintendent Warwick hit it on the head, but I have to speak with my city hat on, and all the natural and man-made disasters, especially the natural disasters that we faced back in 2011, 2012. Without hesitation, when we needed to feed our people in need and the shelters we opened up throughout the city, especially at Central High School, without any question, SEDEXO was there. And that's something that I will never forget, and what you do with the backpacks for our students at Blump Park, thousands of students on it. But during times of adversity, that's one character, whether negative or positive, miscast, positive character, rise to the top, and SEDEXO was there. When we were in need, our people were in need, and we deeply appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
The 2016 annual report, it seems so far in the distance that we've got so much to report for 2017, but you're gonna have to wait till next year for me to communicate what's going on now. But to date, breakfast in the classroom. Thirty-seven public schools, 65 percent of our public schools have implemented breakfast in the classroom. Average student participation for our BIC schools is sitting at 84.7 percent. Eighty-four percent of the students are eating breakfast in school, compared to less than 50 percent in the traditional cafeteria format. Central High School was the first high school in the Commonwealth, and perhaps the country, to implement the program. Two thousand students a day, 115 classrooms. Central High School's participation ended this last school year at 87.9 percent, compared to 23.8 percent when it was in the cafeteria. Studies have shown that students that start their day with a healthy breakfast are more attentive, more focused in class, and should lead to increases in academic performance. School gardens, another initiative. We currently have 21 schools with school gardens. This is up from 14 this past year. We have appropriated $100,000 to allocate for expansion of the school gardens, including adding five garden teachers, one curriculum writer, and one greenhouse employee. Child and adult care feeding programs. That program is a federally funded program. CACFP provides financial aid to children and adult care for the provision of nutritious meals that contribute to the health and the wellness growth and the development of very young children. This new program has provided funding to Springfield since 2014 for the after-school snack and dinner programs. In 2015, the program was expanded to provide daycare meals for early learning childhood center. One of the greatest achievements this year was the contract award. The contract to provide food service to Springfield Public Schools for the next five years was rebid in 2016. SEDEXO was chosen as that provider. The foundation of our partnership has been built on a decade of student enrichment. We honor the past and build for the future. As we transition to nourishing our next generation, I want to personally thank Patrick Roach, Timothy Gray, the selection committee, school board, and administrators, and most especially our parents and students for their continued guidance and support. We thank you for that commitment. The Springfield Culinary and Nutrition Center. The city recently acquired a site for the new Culinary and Nutrition Center, which is located on Cadwell Drive in East Springfield. The center is being designed to accommodate the expansion of the food service program. The plan includes producing and packaging food components to support our breakfast in classroom programs, our dinner, and our summer programs, centralizing catering services, expanding food storage to support direct shipments from the USDA, and a field-to-freezer program, which is increasing food and equipment storage as well as our vending operation. We also are going to be implementing a student culinary arts training program and establishing a district bakery. We thank you for your vision and your support for this major program expansion that will take our program to new heights and goals. Financial performance. In 2016, all financial targets were achieved. To date, Springfield has received a program surplus of $18 million. These funds have been reinvested to develop and expand our food service program, and to date, over $3.7 million has been invested in new cooking and service equipment through our annual capital improvement plan. Grants this past year. In fiscal year 16, the food service program applied and received grant funding totaling These grants included USDA grants, as well as private funding from foundations, as well as the New England Dairy Council, as well as equipment grants from the USDA and summer programs. In the past five years, we have received grant funding totaling $3.5 million. Breakfast and lunch meal participation, to the superintendent's comments, in fiscal year 16, there was significant growth in both breakfast and lunch meal participation. This growth was primarily due to implementation of the community eligibility provision in our charter and parochial schools, whereby all students receive breakfast and lunch at no cost regardless of their income eligibility, and a great expansion in our breakfast in the classroom programs, now in 37 of our schools. Central High School once again was the first in the Commonwealth and perhaps the country to implement this program. Meal participation in May of 2016 was 69.7 percent for breakfast and 84 percent for lunch. In fiscal year 16, we increased meal participation by 822,000 meals from the previous year to over now 2 million meals additional being served in our district. Direct certification. Direct certification of students who receive some form of federal assistance in meals at no cost. This is a major component of the food service program and has a direct impact on Title I E-Rate funding and other funding for the district. In September of 2015, that number was 62.7 percent. By working those numbers, in June of 2016, it was increased to 81.5 percent, compared to 76.9 percent the previous year. Reorganization of the management team was necessary to transition to nourishing the next decade through student engagement. Once again, we honor the past, build for the future. The reorganization including adding a general manager, a director of sustainability with school garden coordinators, and a quality and assurance manager and grant writer. It also included transitioning our former operations position to director of student engagement and food service managers to chefs. The food service program currently has 349 employees, 58 more than the previous year. The average SEDEXO rate is 15.58 per hour. Eighty-nine.4 percent of our employees are women, and 75.6 percent are minority, and best of all, 82.2 percent are Springfield residents. Principal surveys are utilized every year to measure how the food service program is servicing and responding to needs of our students and our principals. The feedback is used to create action plans for the development and implementation of programs and services that continuously improve the quality of the food service program. And you can see those statistics are something we're very, very proud of. Overall satisfaction is at 4.5 percent on a scale of one to five. Capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan continues to be funded through the food service program surplus and is designed to repair or replace old cooking equipment in our schools, the majority of which, $250,000 this past year, was spent with breakfast in the classroom in our schools. Recycling. I'm happy to report that 100 percent of our schools have single-stream recycling containers inside and outside, with at least weekly pickups of cardboard, paper, plastics, and tin cans and aluminum. All but six kitchens recycle plastic, and all but two recycle linoleum. Another goal is to reduce and eventually eliminate Styrofoam trays used in our schools. These disposable trays will be replaced with hard-plastic trays. Eight schools currently use reusable trays, and in the next couple of months, two more are pending. The plan is to convert four schools per year over the next five years. Student well-being community, which is one of our last pillars, the backpacker program, which the mayor commented about. The mission of the backpacker program is to stop hunger faced by children of SEDEXO Partner School Districts on weekends by providing them non-perishable food in backpacks. The program is funded primarily through SEDEXO employees who sponsor a child at $5 a month. That program is going to be expanded to other school district employees in the near future. The program officially started in February of 2008, and to date, 14,000 backpacks have been distributed on the weekend. Our annual scholarship and back-to-school celebration in May, SEDEXO presented 12 Springfield High School students with scholarships. The annual event featured a dinner and awards ceremony. To date, SEDEXO has awarded $118,500 in scholarships. In August of 2016, SEDEXO, in partnership with Springfield Public Schools, celebrated the eighth annual back-to-school celebration. That event took place at Blump Park and was attended by thousands of students, parents, and sponsors. The event included companies and organizations providing various family resources, a lunch barbecue in the distribution of over 4,000 backpacks filled with school supplies. Our last pillar for student well-being is activity. Our Future Chefs event, shown on the left. Future Chef is a SEDEXO culinary celebration event held annually for elementary and middle school students. The culinary competition was created to challenge students to think creatively about healthy meal options and encourage parents to become engaged in their students' education. Students develop their own recipes, prepare their creations, and then present them to a panel of distinguished judges for their critique and evaluation. The event concludes with a taste testing and awards ceremony. In March, the third annual Future Chef event was held at Putnam Vocational High School, where 15 students competed, and Hope Christian Clark, a fifth grader from St. Michael's Academy, won first place. Hope went on to become one of 40 national winners with SEDEXO. Our last slide just talks about the 2017 goals and objectives for the year. We're gonna continue expanding our breakfast in the classroom program. We have a zero accident policy for our SEDEXO employees. We're gonna continue to expand our farm-to-school initiatives, as well as the Culinary Arts Center marketing and grant acquisitions. We're expanding our dinner programs and our summer programs, and we're gonna implement new sites, including Pope Francis High and Veritas Charter. Mutual respect at all times. We win or lose as a team, similar to what DeBarry does, and we want to maintain our acceptable labor, controllable costs, and meet our financial responsibilities. And with that, I thank you very much.
Any questions or comments on the presentation?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Can I just go over what you do zero accident plan with, or yeah, the zero accident plan?
We have a zero accident mentality with our employees. Workers' compensation for our employees is extremely expensive. We spent last year greater than $68,000 on workers' compensation claims. By changing the culture to a zero accident culture, we're gonna incentivize our employees to work safely, to compete against each other to work safely, and thus reduce that liability, not only financially, but help them work safer and be safer in their environments. Kitchens are dangerous places, and our employees are faced with many, many challenges in those kitchens, from ovens to kettles to steamers to you name it. So we want to create a culture for zero accidents in our school district.
Thank you, Kenneth.
By changing the culture to a zero accident culture, we're gonna incentivize our employees to work safely, to compete against each other to work safely, and thus reduce that liability, not only financially, but help them work safer and be safer in their environments. Kitchens are dangerous places, and our employees are faced with many, many challenges in those kitchens, from ovens to kettles to steamers to you name it. So we want to create a culture for zero accidents in our school district.
Thank you, Kenneth.
Thank you.
I had another one. I wanted to thank you for the breakfast in the classrooms, because I know you said earlier that it just might help the students. It has helped a lot, has helped significantly with the math school, with not only people being there in classes and getting the grades up and everything, I'm sorry, getting attendance up. It also helps with their grades, because we're actually more focused in the mornings, and that has had a real impact.
No, thank you very much, Kenneth. Appreciate it.
Kenneth hit the ground running.
Yeah, he is. I think he's gonna be on this side. Next to your mic. Thank you very much for that feedback.
Any other questions or comments?
You know, I think Kenneth hit the nail on the head. I think when you look at the research, the importance of breakfast, and how kids do better, their attendance goes up, their grades are better. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education now counts it as instructional time, because it's research-based, a best practice, and so important for our kids and families. So our attendance improves, grades improve, we have the kids in school on time, and getting a quality start to the school day. So it's just, you and your team have done an outstanding job, because in large schools like Kenneth School or Central, it's a logistical nightmare to make the breakfast in the classroom work, and they have made it work seamlessly. And that's just great work by you and your team. I also want to tip my cap to Pat Roach, who's done an outstanding job for my department in making sure that all of this comes off well, and has really been committed to this effort. And I would just want to thank and recognize Pat for his great work on this also.
Ms. Hurst?
So I know that in the past, we've always commended you guys for being such great partners, and the mayor and the superintendent just alluded to it earlier. But I have to say that the work that you do is just so exceptional, and by profession, I'm a social worker, so I have had several conversations with people around hunger and poverty, two issues that we face here in this city, but not just in this city, but all across the Commonwealth. And I think that what you're doing has such an effect on a macro level, that kids are able to go home and have food in a bookbag, and their parents are able to partake in that food, too, is just outstanding. And so I really say thank you, not just for the city of Springfield and the kids that we serve every day, but for all the kids that you guys serve through your school program. It's really appreciated, and I'm sure it's gonna have long-lasting effects.
Thank you. It's our privilege.
Any other questions, Vic Chair Collins?
SEDEXO has truly become the definition of what a good corporate citizen is. You really are there every time that there's a need within this city.
Without question.
Without doubt. And everything that Denise said, I echo, and I also want to say that everything old becomes new again. I am so glad to hear that you're going back to solid trays, you're reducing the waste that's going through, the recycling is coming up. That makes me very happy, and everything old becomes new again.
It does, literally. Oh, bottoms will be next.
Very good comeback, Mark, there. Any other questions or comments? Norma, good to see you, too.
Yeah.
If none, I just, I love saying it. Henry! I gotta say Henry. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
We'll now move to reports of standing committees. A is Student Relations and Careful Concerns. Discretion, again, she is unable to attend tonight's meeting. B is Building and Maintenance Committee.
No report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. C is Legislative and Contracts Committee.
No report.
Thank you for all that. D is Curriculum and Programs Committee.
No report at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. E is Budget and Finance Committee, Vice Chair Collins.
We dealt with Allen M., which came out of the committee.
Any questions or comments in the Vice Chair Collins report? Okay, hearing none. F is Vocational Education Committee.
No report.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. G is Technology Committee.
No report.
I think that's, Attorney Murphy had to leave, his daughter was here earlier. H is School Safety Committee, I believe that's Discretion, Unable to Attend.
We did have a meeting, but we already discussed it.
They had three items that came out tonight, Mayor, out of the school safety.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Okay, we'll move to the report of the superintendent. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We were just talking about breakfast in the classroom and all the work Pat has done on this. We have another award, I think the fifth or sixth year in a row, from the American Association of School Business Officials, for a school district winning again another meritorious budget award. Just outstanding work by Pat and his great team every year. For the last several years, when we worked through this budget process, it's been a really tough process because of all the cuts we've sustained, but we found every efficiency possible to keep the cuts as far away from the kids, and really, the staff has been efficient, really smart about their work, and really committed. And just tip my cap to Pat and his team for a great job and another great award. So thank you, Patrick. And a great leader. The team has a great leader in you. Thank you.
Well, while some things old become new again, some things never get old. Congratulations to your whole department.
Mayor, Mayor, may I? I think tonight is your night, Pat. Is anybody else here to hear this? I was at the school committee conference last week in Hyannis and attended one of the seminars that was being conducted by Masbo, and they sung both Pat and TJ's praises, which was really good, and they were all excited to see somebody from Springfield. So congratulations.
You know, I have to say, as I tell it to my CFO, TJ Plant, it's not sexy, but having finances in order allows us to do those sexy-type projects or innovations. And Pat did a tremendous job, and TJ and our team, and highest bond ratings in the city's history. And also stabilizing the school budget, which had to take some challenges and take some hits. And when the city was struggling, Superintendent Warwick worked very closely with me to, so we could help make ends meet, and then in turn, we returned the favor moving forward. So it's a balancing act, and Pat, you and your team do a tremendous job, and we deeply appreciate it, especially the impact it does frontline with our students in the classroom. Any other questions or comments? Are you cutting any checks?
Just kidding.
Just kidding. That was a joke. Superintendent Warwick.
We had a great announcement this week. Our Scholar-Athlete Program is an informational piece, started at the third school, we're expanding to the high school of Commerce. Commerce has just a great athletic tradition, probably more state championships in basketball than any other school in the Commonwealth. And the Scholar-Athlete Program has been exceptional. The focus is on college and career readiness for our kids. There's a lot of tutoring that goes on through the program. So the idea isn't just keeping kids eligible to participate, but it's helping them achieve academically, graduate on time, and go on and succeed in college. They even have help in the Zone Center for FAFSA completion. We're really committed to the kids. And our local colleges have been participating, providing a lot of tutors, and I'm really proud of all the local colleges. But American International College has the highest participation rate of tutors of any school in the state, and they have all those large colleges in Boston, and they called out AIC as having, providing the most support to these centers. And Vince Maniachi told me it was mission-centric. This is what AIC is all about, helping kids. So I just thought that was terrific. But the program's great, and this is about all of our kids graduating from high school, going on to college, and succeeding in college. So really thrilled with the program, and just very grateful to John Fish and Rebecca Solowzer, an All-American athlete, but they've just been, they've given so much to our kids here in Springfield to help them. It's really great to see, again, another corporate entity that has stepped up to really help our kids. So just, I was thrilled to be there the other day, and again, this is our third center, and we're gonna keep it going, but it's just moving in the right direction. And the focus, again, is in athletics, it's academics. And it's just been a great program for our kids.
I have to say, with Springfield Scholar-Athletes, again, modeled from the Boston Scholar-Athletes, this, again, third school, Miami-Monroe High School of Commerce, first Putnam, and then SciTech, Kenneth. But this all stemmed from relationships, and this sort of took place during our time with the MGM and our visits to Boston, where Kevin Kennedy, my chief development officer and I, were in the midst of presentations, and John Fish, Suffolk Construction, very philanthropic, had reached out through Tommy Menino, Mayor Menino, God rest his soul, and the mayor had indicated to me that, Dom, this is something you have to do. And John Fish puts his money where his mouth is, and has really been very helpful in expanding this to the Springfield area. And not only is Superintendent Warwick alluded to, to our athletes that are playing varsity or JV, but also intermural. And mainly, it's based on making sure that they not only excel on and off the field of the court, but in the classroom. It's just been a huge success, and I appreciate Superintendent Warwick going out there and AD Mike Martin. And now we have, we have three schools, and we're gonna look to push it more, but again, to John Fish and Becca and to the late Tommy Menino, when they brought it to our attention and we met, and it's just been, it's just been outstanding. So another, I believe this is only being done in Boston and in Springfield. Superintendent Warwick, unless there's any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor. The next thing is, I put an article from the newspaper that appeared today in the newspaper, was on Mass Live, about Governor Charlie Baker saying Springfield Schools' empowerment zone could be a model for Massachusetts. I thank the school committee for their courageous support when we put the empowerment zone in place, clearly in light of the vote no on the charter school piece that occurred this week. We need to look for a third way, and the empowerment zone in Springfield is being cited nationally as that third way. So we received some very, very nice recognition from Governor Baker for that work, and I think things are going very well. I'd like to call out Tim Collins, who's in the audience, who was very supportive and took a courageous stand to allow us to create the empowerment zone, and I think it's been a home run so far for the city of Springfield.
And I'd have to say to Tim Collins also, too, that we never, Superintendent, myself and others, that we were never opposed directly to charters, all because of the innovative programs that we're doing here and partnering what we do well in public and some flexibility charter. All we ever asked for, and Tim really led the charge, equitable funding. That's all we ever asked for on the issue. So that's nice to be noted. The governor has held our district as an example that should be followed throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a contracts report in your packet. If you have any question on the contracts, please don't hesitate to contact Pat Roach or I. And I thought it was great this week, and I again want to congratulate Tim and the folks from the SEA and the MTA across the state, and again, recognize our school committee for taking a courageous stand against expansion of the charter schools. And eternally grateful for that. It was defeated 62 to 38% as a result of one support. But I also want to recognize Tim and the MTA. Tim even bought his button tonight to show us. He's still campaigning on it. But he and his team did a great job leading the charge on that, but I also want to commend the school committee to support our public schools. And, you know, despite the misleading advertising, $36 million out of our budget last year went to charter schools, and then to not even fund the reimbursement, cut a $3.2 more million. And that doesn't even recognize, every time they locate a charter school, it's a citywide magnet, and it costs us millions extra on the mayor's budget for transportation. So I just want to commend everyone for their efforts, and just recognize Tim for taking the lead on it, because I think it was a great job.
And that's all I have. Any questions of Superintendent Warwick's report? Okay, hearing none. We moved unfinished business. Hearing none, we moved to new business. Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. There's a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Good evening. Thank you for watching. Happy Veterans Day and happy Marine birthday. God bless.